I hope to get out to that 70-degree sunshine. We'll see. All right. So without further ado, what I would like to do is welcome everyone to this FDA session this morning before the official kickoff of the conference at the President's Symposium that's going to happen this afternoon at 3:30. So I have the privilege today of welcoming our guests from the FDA and introducing them briefly. So during this session, the leaders from the FDA Center for Tobacco Products are going to discuss updates on a wide range of programmatic areas. First, we're going to hear from the CTP Director Mitch Zeller. He's going to discuss the recent and upcoming regulatory actions, CTP's progress on the review of pre-market tobacco product applications, and the regulatory issues raised by the reports of increased use of synthetic nicotine. Then Dr. Ben Appleberg, the Deputy Director for Regulatory Science in CTP's Office of Science, will provide further details on the scientific review and the decisions that are associated with the pre-market tobacco product applications, as well as discuss the latest in the tobacco regulatory science and current funding opportunities. And then finally, Kathy Crosby, the Director of CTP's Office of Health Communications and Education, will provide updates on CTP's public health or public education campaigns, including a new effort to reach out to American Indian and Alaska Native youth audiences, and on how existing campaigns have shifted risk perceptions of vapes among teens. So we are going to have a question and answer session with all three of the presenters at the end of the presentation, so if you'll just hold your comments until that time. When it is time to speak, if you'll come to one of the mics, we would request that you say your name and affiliation and then ask your question. And so with that, I will turn it over to Mitch.
Wow. Was a long time coming. Bruce Wheeler, who never resists the opportunity to sort of dig certain things in, remembers that I had to make the fateful phone call two years ago to say that FDA would not be coming to New Orleans for SRNT. And I don't know if you've seen it, but there were people who were wearing that they were in New Orleans from 2020 on their badges. So Bruce just felt the need to rub that in a little bit. That was really, really kind of the SRNT leadership. Anyhow, good afternoon. It really is great to see everyone and to be able to have the right kind of safe, in-person interactions. Megan has made the introduction, so I'm just going to move right onto our agenda and get into the substance of my talk. So I'm going to start with an update from the center, talk a little bit about life programmatically at CTP during COVID, give you the latest on some of the youth tobacco use data. Ben will have more to say about that. And then a series of programmatic updates. I will be followed by Ben Appleberg, who will take a deeper dive into the issues that the Office of Science is dealing with, and then Kathy Crosby will give a programmatic update on behalf of the Office of Health Communication and Education. And this is not unique to FDA or CTP, but you know, what has it been like to try to get the organization's work done in the middle of an unprecedented pandemic? And it's now, we're into the beginning of the third year of this, and hopefully we're in a better place, but there are still challenges and risks. And we have worked as hard as we can to continue to do the work that we started at CTP pre-pandemic. And again, I don't think that's unique to our organization, but I can report to you that after an initial adjustment to working 100% remotely, that the productivity of the center was completely unaffected by the pandemic and everybody working from home. I'll say that at a personal level, while there was productivity when it came to our work, we have all experienced challenges, as all of you have, when it comes to that work-life balance. And especially for staff at the center that had childcare or elder care responsibilities, to say nothing of experiencing any of their own possible health issues. That's where the challenges have been. But again, I think that's true for all organizations. But the center has continued to do the work and to work vigorously on behalf of the public health during these unprecedented times. We initially did have to suspend all of the in-person inspections that we do of retail establishments, and this was back in 2020. And this was to protect the health and the well-being of our employees and those that do inspections for us on a contracting basis at the state and local level. But following all of the EPI, we were able to begin limited resumption of these in-person inspections in October of 2020. But some of what we do, which we don't talk a lot about publicly, has always been done remotely. And especially when it comes to the monitoring and surveillance that we do of websites, social media, and publications. So that work was completely unaffected and is an important part of our monitoring and surveillance efforts from a compliance and enforcement standpoint. And I can assure you that working with agency leadership, colleagues at CDC, and following all of the guidelines at the federal, state, and local level, we're constantly monitoring the data to see if we need to make any adjustments to onsite, in-person, physical inspections. Of course, in recent months, with the change in administration last year, there's been an important change in leadership at the highest level at FDA. And last month, the Senate confirmed Dr. Robert Califf for his second stint at the agency as Commissioner. Dr. Califf had previously served as the Deputy Commissioner for Medical Products and Tobacco in 2015 and 2016, and then put in a year as Commissioner at the end of the Obama administration. And we are delighted to welcome him back for Califf 2.0 at FDA. And since January of last year, with the change in administrations, Janet Woodcock, a longtime, very experienced senior agency official, has ably served until Dr. Califf's return as the Acting Commissioner. So let me turn to some of the substance, starting with youth tobacco use, and a few words about the 2021 National Youth Tobacco Survey. So with CDC, we released the e-cigarette results from last year's NYTS late September. And NYTS was in the field last year for the normal amount of time, mid-January through roughly late May. But because of the pandemic, it was the first time that this survey was fielded entirely during the pandemic. The 2020 NYTS started pre-pandemic and then was halted. To accommodate the reality of the pandemic, last year's survey was completely online. That way, we were able to capture middle school and high school-age kids wherever they were getting schooled, in school, at home, anyplace else. Of course, before the pandemic, this was an entirely in-school survey. And we know that kids sometimes answer questions differently in school versus at home. And so because of these important methodological differences involving last year's survey, one cannot make year-to-year comparisons, taking the 2021 data and trying to compare it to any other year's data. It's really best to look at the 2021 data in the abstract and then draw any conclusions that you would like. So here are some of the key findings just on e-cigarettes. Ben is going to go into more detail on the more recently released data beyond e-cigarettes. But 2021 reported that there were more than 2 million current middle school and high school-age e-cigarette users. And within that universe of current users, nearly 85% preferred a flavored e-cigarette. And when we refer to flavored e-cigarettes, we're referring to basically anything other than a tobacco-flavored product. Within the world of current e-cigarette users, over half used a disposable product. And amongst current e-cigarette users, about 40% were frequent vapors, and that's defined as vaping on 20 or more of the past 30 days. And a quarter of current youth e-cigarette users vaped 30 out of the past 30 days. So how are we, as regulators, supposed to think about the issue of kids and e-cigarettes, especially when it comes to the role of flavors, given that we know that this is the category that is most used by kids, and that kids who use e-cigarettes are far more likely to prefer a flavored product? So the public health concern at the front end on that accord is given. So programmatically, the way that we are trying to address the issue of kids' use of e-cigarettes is through pre-market review, compliance and enforcement, and our public education efforts, in addition to all of the ongoing research that we are funding. I'm going to talk a bit about pre-market review. Ben will go into more detail on that. I'll talk a bit about compliance and enforcement, and I'll leave to Kathy to talk about what we're doing on the public education front. So pre-market review. So as the result of litigation, the courts established for currently marketed newly deemed products, and almost all of which we're talking about being e-cigarettes, a deadline that applications for those products were due to the agency by September 9th of 2020. We wound up receiving applications for about 6.7 million products. Most of those came in under the PMTA or the Pre-Market Tobacco Product Application pathway, and most of those were for ends products, electronic nicotine delivery systems, such as e-cigarettes. And so new for the companies submitting their applications and mostly new for us reviewing. And just as an aside, under the terms of a completely separate court case, we were ordered not to apply the pre-market review requirements in the law to so-called premium cigars, products that met a court definition of a premium cigar. To date, we have taken action on 99% of those 6.7 million products. This includes the first-ever marketing authorization for e-cigarettes and marketing denial orders or MDOs for more than a million flavored ends products. Here are the numbers all told through the end of January. RTA stands for refuse to accept. That's an administrative step. We have refused to accept more than 200,000 product applications. RTF stands for refuse to file. That's the next phase in the process. We have refused to file more than 5 million products. We've issued MGO or marketing granted orders to three products. We've issued marketing denial orders to over 1.2 million ends products. And along the way, more than 80,000 applications were either withdrawn or canceled. In terms of authorizations and denials, the first-ever authorizations were last October for three tobacco-flavored products manufactured by Reynolds. At the same time, we rejected 10 flavored Reynolds products in the same brand name. And later, last October, we also authorized four oral tobacco products. So where are we today? Well, we're continuing to work as hard as we can to complete what we've started. There are, of that original 6.7 million products, there are about 53,000 that remain under review, and many of our reviews are in their final stages. In addition, we're also reviewing a smaller number of pending applications under a different pathway, the substantial equivalence pathway, for combustible products, cigars, pipe tobacco, and hookah. Included in the remaining 53,000 products are still a number of flavored ends products. And there, on a case-by-case basis, we're looking at each application to see, under the terms of the statute that Congress established, placing the legal burden on the manufacturer to demonstrate to us that the marketing of a flavored product is appropriate for the protection of the public health, we continue our review of those remaining applications to see if a company has sufficient and robust enough scientific evidence on a product-specific basis in order for us to be able to conclude that the benefits of authorizing those flavored products for adults overcomes the built-in risks and concerns that we have when it comes to the popularity of those flavored products with kids. And just a word about menthol. Due to the ongoing availability of menthol cigarettes, our assessment of menthol e-cigarettes raises some unique considerations, and those products remain under review. Whenever FDA takes a final negative action, and there's different types of negative actions that we can take, the affected company has the right to appeal or sue. And we have been sued by 48 different e-cigarette manufacturers after they received a marketing denial order from us. Those cases have been filed in 10 different federal circuit courts, and 48 cases are still pending in court. Some companies have chosen to go through the internal administrative appeals process at FDA. We're reviewing dozens of those kinds of requests. And whenever we have changes to our list of companies that received a marketing denial order, we update our tobacco products marketing orders page. And when it comes to those marketing denial orders in the cases that were filed in court, the courts themselves have issued stays for seven of the MDOs that we issued. Let me turn to compliance and enforcement. We have what we call a three-pronged approach, where we hope that the first prong results in compliance, and that is through our ongoing training and education efforts. But I mentioned the monitoring and surveillance that we do, and that's a combination of the surveillance, the inspections, and investigations. And if through the monitoring, we see a violation of the law, there are any number of actions that we can take. It can start with what's known as a warning letter, which is what it says. It's a letter to a company pointing out a violation of the law and giving them an opportunity to fix or remedy. And then there are stepped-up actions that we can take beyond a warning letter, starting with civil money penalty complaints. And that's basically seeking a fine for ongoing violations of the statute. That money does not go to FDA. It goes to general federal revenue funds. And for retailers, the statute gives us the authority to go before an administrative law judge and seek what's known as a no-tobacco sale order. And that's where a judge issues an order to a specific retailer who's had so many violations of the law within a specified period of time, that that retailer is ordered by an administrative law judge to not sell any tobacco products of any type for a specified period of time. Beyond that, when it involves us going to court, we can work with FDA litigators and the Justice Department when it comes to pursuing things like seizure, or injunction, or even a criminal prosecution. For those retail inspections of brick-and-mortar retailers, we are constantly updating the results of those actions in a searchable database. We launched our enforcement program in 2010, and since then, we have done over 1.2 million inspections of retailers. And those are primarily done through a contracting process with entities at the state and local level. Of those more than 1.2 million inspections, unfortunately, we've had to issue over 105,000 warning letters, and that includes more than 14,000 for violations of the law related to the illegal sale of e-cigarettes to kids or illegal marketing of products. And then beyond warning letters, we've had to launch over 25,000 civil money penalty actions, more than 2,000 of which were for illegal actions related to e-cigarettes. And then for the true recidivist retailer, we've had to go before that administrative law judge setting to initiate 220 no-tobacco sale order actions. We got a lot of questions about what the priorities are when it comes to enforcement, because technically, for the newly deemed products, any product that is on the market, without what is required by law to be a marketing authorization, technically, that product is marketed unlawfully and subject to enforcement action at our discretion. So over the years, through guidance and other statements, we have tried to articulate what our enforcement priorities are. And it starts with, when it comes to e-cigarettes and other ends products, the flavored products that are the most appealing to kids. That is obviously an enforcement priority for us. But more recently, and again, under the terms of that court order with all those applications coming in, and through our monitoring and surveillance efforts, we're looking to see if there are products currently on the market where there is no application pending whatsoever. And that can happen in a variety of ways. A company could have gotten a final negative action from us, whether it's refuse to accept, refuse to file, or a marketing denial order, and for whatever reason, not taking their products off the market. Or, and I'll give you numbers on this in a second, we have companies that are selling products that never submitted an application to us in the first place. So those are examples of what some of our highest enforcement priorities are. We very closely monitor the behavior of manufacturers, importers, distributors, and retailers for compliance. But when it comes to the pre-market review issues, they are looking at the behavior of manufacturers, importers, and distributors. Last year, we had to issue 210 warning letters to companies that collectively, in our product listing database, listed more than 17 million ends products and never submitted an application to FDA. And from September 9th of 2020 through the end of February, we've had to issue warning letters to another 110 companies, and these letters are being issued on an ongoing basis, on a rolling basis, because we saw that they were products on the market unlawfully, because we knew that they had received a marketing denial order or refuse to accept letter or refused to file letter and had not removed their products from the market. Let me turn to synthetic nicotine. I'm going to check my watch, because we're close to something happening at the White House this afternoon. So you all know this, especially in the last year or so, there's been an increasing number of e-cigarette and other ends products that are using, or at least are claiming to be using, synthetic nicotine, nicotine that is not derived from tobacco. And this includes the product that emerged as the single most popular product with kids in last year's NYTS survey, and that is puff bar. Some of the companies have been quite brazen. And after receiving MDOs, they publicly stated that they were switching to synthetic nicotine in order to keep their products on the market. As regulators, we obviously are very concerned about this kind of behavior if it's clear that the intent is to evade regulation and enforcement. And our concern is heightened when that behavior is on the part of companies selling products that we know are incredibly popular with kids. Here's an example of one company that leaves nothing to the imagination. This is a social media posting the day after this company received a marketing denial order from FDA. The next day, they said that they were switching to tobacco-free nicotine. The main purpose of this is to be outside of the FDA's regulation, F the FDA. It's not funny. So what are some of the challenges here that we faced as regulators? Trying to enforce the law. Well, under current law, without a change in the current law, e-liquids that don't contain nicotine or any other substance that's made or derived from tobacco could still be regulated as tobacco products, depending upon how we interpreted the definition of components and parts under the statutory definition. But that's a challenge. Another challenge is the chemical challenge, as it's, over time, becoming increasingly difficult to test and differentiate tobacco-derived from non-tobacco-derived nicotine. Earlier generations of synthetic nicotine were roughly a 50/50 mix of two isomers that made it easier for us to distinguish in the laboratory synthetic nicotine from tobacco-derived nicotine. But newer formulations of synthetic nicotine are now almost exclusively a single isomer, making that differentiation between tobacco and non-tobacco-derived nicotine more challenging, and conceivably more challenging over time. On the tobacco-derived nicotine side, interestingly, tobacco-derived nicotine is increasingly being made available at a pharmaceutical grade. With tobacco-derived nicotine, in the past, in the laboratory, we were able to see a chemical fingerprint, whether it was TSNAs or other peaks that showed up where we knew that we were talking and looking at tobacco-derived nicotine. But if tobacco-derived nicotine is now pharmaceutical grade, that makes that differentiation more challenging. Last week, as part of the funding of the federal government, to keep the government funded through the end of the current fiscal year, which runs through September 30th, Congress, both houses of Congress included a provision that would amend the tobacco chapter of the Food, Drug, and Cosmetic Act to bring synthetic nicotine, and in fact, nicotine derived from any source, under FDA's tobacco statutory authorities. And the President has signaled that he intends to sign that bill. And the reason why I'm checking my watch is, he's supposed to sign that bill in about 15 minutes. And when that happens, regulation of synthetic nicotine will become effective within 30 An update on rules and guidances. We are still the baby center at FDA. And while this will be 13 years since we opened our doors, the other centers are considerably more stood up than we are, because they've been around for 30 years, 40 years, 50, 60, 70 years. But we're catching up. And one of the ways that we are catching up is through the issuance of what we call foundational rules, really, really important rules, especially as regards pre-market pathways for applications. Last November, two of these foundational rules went into effect, dealing with the pre-market tobacco product or PMTA and substantial equivalence SC pathways. And these are final rules that make clear, because these rules are enforceable, what the requirements are when it comes to what has to be in an application. This only applies to applications submitted after these rules went into effect last November. And the goal here is to make sure that we get the information that we need to be able to interpret and apply the statutory standards for whatever the pathway is in an effective, consistent, and transparent way. I wanted also to call your attention to a draft guidance that has not received a lot of public attention that we issued in late December, related to analytical test methods for tobacco products. And this was a guidance that, when finalized, is going to have really important information for researchers, for industry, when it comes to the validation and the verification of any aspect of the products that are the subject of applications, constituents, ingredients, additives, product stability. Another sign of the maturity of the center, that we have gotten familiar enough with these kinds of technical issues to be able to provide this kind of guidance to industry. And we are currently reviewing the comments that came in in response to this draft guidance that were submitted through late February. Let me turn to product standards. And just by way of background, here, we're talking about rules that set requirements for how the products that we regulate can be manufactured, distributed, sold, or offered for distribution or sale. In essence, the product standard authority is the authority to ban or limit the allowable level of any ingredient, compound, constituent, or additive in the finished tobacco product intended for sale to the consumer. We are on track to issue two proposed product standards next month. The first would prohibit menthol as a characterizing flavor in cigarettes, and the second would prohibit all characterizing flavors, including menthol, but not including tobacco, in cigars. We announced the intention to do this last year, and that's because the decision to use the product standard authority in these ways is based on a powerful evidence base that establishes the addictiveness and the harms associated with these products, and builds on a provision that Congress wrote into the Tobacco Control Act in 2009 that prohibited nearly all flavored cigarettes, but of course exempted menthol. If these product standards are finalized and go into effect, you are going to see a significant positive public health impact. You're going to see a significant reduction in youth initiation. And because who the remaining smoker is for both cigarettes and mass-produced cigars, these final rules... these final rules, when in effect, will go a long way to addressing some profound tobacco-related A word about how we would enforce any such final rules, because we have been receiving questions about this in light of some very important societal questions that have been raised, especially about policing. Our responsibility at the federal level as regulators, whether we're talking about enforcing a prohibition on menthol in cigarettes, or any characterizing flavor in cigars, only applies, our jurisdiction only reaches, to the behavior of manufacturers, distributors, wholesalers, importers, and retailers. We cannot, and we don't have the authority, to enforce against individual consumer possession or use, whether it comes to a menthol cigarette or a flavored cigar. Is that going to solve the policing problem? That's something that we should talk about. But I want to make clear what the extent of our jurisdiction is when it comes to enforcing the federal law, and whose behavior we are watching, as you've seen from this presentation, when it comes to compliance and enforcement actions by FDA. Having said that, we do have a responsibility, if these product standards go into effect, to make sure that illicit product doesn't enter the marketplace, doesn't get into interstate commerce. So we would be doing that kind of monitoring and surveillance going forward. We're talking about some potentially significant changes here. And we're talking about the remaining smoker who, as a society, we have left behind when it comes to those health disparities. Kathy and her team are working on some important public education tools, starting with new posters aimed at delivering an evidence-based, important and positive message when it comes to the reality of what it takes to stop using a combustible tobacco product. We're going to get these materials out to diverse audiences. This includes LGBTQ+ smokers, and information in both English and Spanish. And along the way, we will be promoting a website that we have created in collaboration with NCI, that's everytrycounts.gov. And much of our material is available completely for free at what used to be our exchange lab, and is now the FDA Tobacco Education Resource Library. A word about public participation in FDA's rulemaking process, because that's what these product standards are going to be going through. They will start as a proposed, a set of proposed rules that, as I said, we are on track to issue next month. When we issue them, and with the accompanying economic analyses that are in the works, all sectors, all interested parties, get to see what we're proposing, the rationale, and the evidence base for prohibiting the use of these flavors in these products. And with that comes an opportunity, I would say, an important opportunity for all interested parties to comment and react to what we proposed. The comments that are submitted to a docket for rules like this are really important, and can be very helpful in determining, as we first sort of look back at what we proposed after the comment period closed, to ask ourselves, is there anything there in light of the information that's provided in the comments that we should reconsider, that we should change, as we decide whether or not to proceed with a final rule? And while we read every single comment, the comments that can be the most impactful on our thinking are comments that are supported by studies, by data, and any other information, especially information that you didn't see in the proposed rule, which means that we might not have been aware of it. Again, we take that part of the job very, very seriously. That's all done behind the scenes. We don't talk about it publicly, because it's extremely deliberative. But once we have finished assessing what's in the comments, we then make the decision whether to proceed to issuing a final rule. Because those final rules, when they go into effect, are enforceable, and what comes with that is civil and even criminal liability for violations of the law. And the role of the research community in informing our thinking, and the role of SRNT, of course, and the SRNT membership, is important, because it's the regulatory science that is our guide. And when the research community participates in our rulemaking process, it makes the process better, because it helps to ensure that our decisions remain squarely grounded, both in the law and in the science. A few closing thoughts. So it is now a little over nine years since I became center director. The center has been in existence, as I said, for June will be 13 years. And I think that we are making great strides when it comes to the overarching public health objectives of preventing people, especially kids, from starting, encouraging those who are currently using products to stop, and reducing the harm associated with ongoing use of tobacco products. But our work is far from done, and there is a lot to do. And it starts with addressing the profound health disparities and the systemic health equity issues that lie at the core of, especially on the combustible side, who is the remaining user of combustible tobacco products? Things change, and our job is to try to keep up with changes in the marketplace, synthetic nicotine being just the most recent example, and to deal with unforeseen challenges. That's our job, that's the job of all the centers at FDA, for all regulated industries. With that comes a responsibility, a public health responsibility, to balance individual and population-level outcomes. We're not, to state the obvious, talking about a homogeneous set of products that we regulate. They're very diverse, and at an individual and population level, can pose varying levels of risk. And our job is to take all of that into account, whether we're sitting in the adjudicatory role of reviewing applications, or the more forward-looking policymaking role when it comes to guidances and rules. And so my closing thought, before turning over to Ben, is just to remind you all, not that you need reminding, that in order for us to do our jobs to the best of our abilities, we need to have the strongest regulatory science base to support whatever decisions or policies that we are making. And the research that you all have been doing, are doing, and will be doing, is incredibly helpful to the work of CTP. And it's why we use this term regulatory science, because it's a special kind of science that informs our thinking, and we're grateful for the work that all of you do in your day jobs. So this is how to contact us, and we will make these slides available afterwards. And with that, I will turn it over to Ben. Thank you so much for your attention.
Hi, everyone. It's really great to be here. It's great to be out in the world again. My name is Ben Appleberg. I'm the Deputy Director for Regulatory Science in the Office of Science at FDA Center for Tobacco Products. You know, and as was already mentioned, what I'm going to talk about is a little bit of a deeper dive on the science and decision-making around our pre-market application reviews, and talk a little bit about some key tobacco regulatory science findings, then finish off with a discussion of some funding opportunity announcements that we think will be of interest to folks in this room. Okay, so just to pick up where Mitch left off, I think, you know, in hearing that presentation, it's clear that, you know, we're a science-based regulatory agency, and the scientific evidence that's produced by you all and others really informs our activities, whether that's pre-market review, and I'll talk about, you know, the context of ends, compliance and enforcement, rulemaking, like the product standards that Mitch talked about, or what Kathy is going to talk about in terms of health communication and education. And from the perspective of research that's funded, at least in part, by CTP, we're really proud of, you know, what's been produced over this last decade or so. As of the last fiscal year, there were over 3,000 publications, unique publications, that came out of work funded, at least in part, by CTP, and those studies were referenced or cited in over 15,000 unique publications. So we're really excited about the scope and breadth of the work that's coming out of, at least in part, CTP funding. So as I mentioned, I wanted to dig a little deeper into the tobacco product application review process. You know, I think folks in this room know that, you know, when we're assessing whether to consider authorizing a new tobacco product, our job is to assess the scientific evidence provided by an applicant to determine if the marketing of that product is appropriate for the protection of public health. You know, that means we have to look at both the risks and the benefits to the population as a whole. And so when doing that, we're essentially trying to balance, you know, understanding the impact to users and to non-users, what that impact might be, what the magnitude of that is, and then, you know, make a determination in weighing those risks and benefits. You know, and as Mitch mentioned in his presentation, in the context of flavored ends, you know, there are really some important considerations that we have to take into account. You know, in particular, stems from our understanding that the vast majority of the flavored ends that we're thinking about pose a known and significant risk to kids. And this is, you know, has been sort of shown consistently over time. Ends products are the most used products by kids. The vast majority are using non-tobacco-flavored ends. Fruit flavors are particularly prevalent. And, you know, there's quite a bit of evidence showing that those flavors are influencing initiation and progression to regular use. So we've sort of go into our review of those products with that in mind. And therefore, you know, when we're considering our evaluation of these products, given that clear and known risk to youth, we've determined that it's necessary that an application have sufficiently robust and reliable evidence demonstrating the potential benefit to adult smokers to even sort of consider, you know, that product being appropriate for the protection of public health. Once we have evidence of that robust and reliable benefit, then we can assess the risks and the benefits and make a determination. By contrast, in our reviews, tobacco-flavored ends raise a different set of considerations, because they don't pose that, necessarily pose that same degree of risk to kids, but may provide a similar benefit. And as Mitch mentioned already, menthol ends have some other unique considerations that, you know, that we can consider in our review. So when we're talking about robust and reliable evidence, what do we mean by that? Well, you know, as we've gone through the process of really digging into these applications and reviewing them, it's become clear that there's really some product-specific, direct evidence of benefit that we need to be confident, you know, that such a benefit is likely to be seen. And in particular, there are specific kinds of study designs that we're looking for. That could be a randomized controlled trial, it could be a cohort study, and, you know, there may be other types of evidence that would be adequate if sufficiently robust and reliable. But in particular, what we're trying to assess is, is there evidence that the products that are under review, when used by smokers, that we can assess over time that there is a significant impact on behavior, whether that be completely switching to the product, significantly reducing the number of cigarettes smoked per day? You know, those are the kinds of endpoints and the product-specific evidence that we're looking for, and we're also looking to see what that impact of that product might be compared to a tobacco-flavored ends product, which may not have that same concern with respect to youth risk and youth initiation. So in the absence of really having this evidence of strong benefit, we really can't come to the conclusion that the benefit outweighs the clear risk to youth. And, you know, this thinking and assessment was really the basis for the million-plus marketing denial orders that Mitch mentioned. If you go on our website, you can find an example of the scientific rationale and the thinking behind these marketing denial orders, because there's a sample decision summary that's posted online. As Mitch also mentioned, in the past year, we also authorized the first set of e-cigarette products for a set of tobacco-flavored ends products from Reynolds. And the basis here is the evidence that was provided demonstrated that those products could potentially benefit addicted adult smokers who switched to them through a reduction in exposure to harmful chemicals. You know, and in assessing the benefits and the risks, determine that those benefits outweigh the risk. As Mitch also mentioned, you know, at the same time, we denied several other varieties of these products that were flavors that we deemed to be more appealing to kids, because that evidence of benefit wasn't sufficiently strong to overcome that risk. It's important to know that any authorization decision, any positive marketing granted order, is contingent upon conditions that are described in the order letter. And if you go on our website, you can find an example, or you can find the actual order letters, and you can see what's in there in terms of the requirements. This includes record-keeping and retention, post-market reporting, and then some specific marketing restrictions related to advertising, sales, and packaging and labeling. What's also important to note is that, you know, FDA has the authority to withdraw a marketing order if it's determined that it's no longer appropriate for the protection of public health. And, you know, that could happen, for example, if there's evidence of significant uptake of the product by youth. One of the other decisions that was issued in the past year was the third-ever set of modified risk tobacco product authorizations for very-low nicotine cigarettes. These products were previously authorized to be marketed through our pre-market review pathway. What this authorization did is allow them to include statements around lower nicotine, 95% less nicotine, and reduced nicotine consumption. There's also some requirements of what else needs to be on the marketing. This stems from what the company tested and was determined to be understandable to consumers. And in the case of modified risk tobacco product authorizations, once again, you can find the order letter and the decision summary on our website, and you can see that these types of orders include more detailed requirements for post-market surveillance and studies that have to be conducted and reported to the FDA on an annual basis. These orders are also time-limited, so after a period of time, a company needs to come in and request a renewal, and which, you know, at which point in time will review the existing evidence generated to date. So that's a deeper dive on product review. In terms of tobacco regulatory science at CTP, just a few key highlights. One is that, you know, we really continue to support a variety of national data collection efforts in combination with our federal partners. It's really critical to FDA, to CTP, that we have nationally representative, timely, detailed data on what's happening out there with respect to tobacco use, its determinants, and its effects. As Mitch alluded to in his presentation just last- just last week, FDA and CDC released detailed findings from the 2021 National Youth Tobacco Survey. And I'll just reiterate what he said, that because of the changes in the design due to COVID, they're not directly comparable to previous years, yet they still provide us with the best estimates we have of tobacco use in middle and high school students. E-cigarettes continue to be the dominant product used by middle and high school students, and that's followed by cigarettes, cigars, smokeless tobacco, hookah. Nicotine pouches, for the first time, are, you know, were collected on that survey as well as some other products. You know, so despite the methodological limitations in comparing to previous years, it does reinforce that there's, you know, continued progress in reducing combustible tobacco product use among youth, which is a positive. E-cigarette use continues to be quite high. And I think importantly, some of the specific concerns include the continued prevalence of flavored tobacco products among those who are using tobacco products. We also see, and, you know, there's a lot more detail in the publication that was just released, really, really important and troubling disparities, in particular considerably higher tobacco product use among students who identify as lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, or those who are reporting psychological distress. So once again, you know, although there, you know, it appears to be a positive, move in a positive direction in the population, it's not necessarily experienced by everyone. This publication has a lot of information on nicotine-dependent symptoms and cessation interest as well among youth, and you can find that online. In terms of the PATH study, the PATH study, our collaborative longitudinal study with NIDA, NIH, and CDC continues to proceed. Wave six was launched and completed last year. Wave seven started in January of this year. In total, there's over 450 papers that are published by the tobacco research community with PATH study data. And this Friday, you can find more information in the latest findings from the PATH study, a symposium from 11 to 12:30. I will also just put a plug in for not only data instruments and codebooks being available at the website you see here, but also detailed tables have just been published highlighting both cross-sectional as well as longitudinal findings and estimates from that study. Also, wanted to put a plug in for the PATH study Bio-Specimen Access Program. This is an opportunity for the research community to request access to bio specimens that have been collected for independent analyses. You can find the latest information on what types of samples are available on the website listed here. And then that website also includes a description of how to apply, basically submitting a concept statement. When that's approved, there's a full application. This is not for funding to do that work, but it's to access the specimens themselves and be able to utilize those to conduct your own analyses. Okay, now finally, moving on to funding opportunities. I mean, one of the things that, as we've continued to gather information on what's happening in the world of tobacco, we've continually identified a need for rapid surveillance as a priority. And so because of that, there's a funding opportunity announcement currently out for a Center for Rapid Surveillance of Tobacco to assess changes in use behaviors, product marketing, and marketplace. You know, we really see the value of having rapid or sentinel data sources so that we can get even more timely data on changing patterns of product use, especially as the marketplace continues to shift, as we make marketing authorization decisions, trying to ensure we have the best evidence for what those impacts might be. And generally, you know, trying to gather more real-time evidence. So please check that out. In addition, we've announced funding opportunities for the reissuance of T-CORS and CASL, so the Tobacco Centers of Regulatory Science, as well as the Center for Coordination and Analysis, Science Enhancement, and Logistics. Those funding opportunities are up on NIH's website. And we look forward to reviewing the applications, the submissions that come in there. And then finally, just reminding the research community that there are other funding opportunities also out there that are accepting applications. Includes R01s for tobacco regulatory science, R21s for both secondary data analysis, as well as R21 related to bio specimens, and then K-Awards as well. We think these are really important opportunities for the research community. And we, you know, welcome your application to those opportunities. So in conclusion, I'll just reinforce, you know, I think what you've heard is a common theme in these presentations is that the science that you all and the rest of the folks at SRNT do is critical to informing our regulatory activities. And whether that's assessing the impact of actions we may have already taken or that are ongoing, or to guide and help inform future potential regulatory activities. I can't emphasize enough how useful it is to have the types of scientific evidence published in a timely manner that you all produce. So I really look forward to the Q and A after Kathy's talk, as well as having a chance to be back in person and to see all the work that you all have been doing over the past year. So with that, I'll hand it off to Kathy.
Thanks so much. I'm very excited to be here today. And even though I can't see your smiling faces, I can see your smiling eyes. And I know that you two are happy to be here. So thank you for our hosts, SRNT, and gathering us together because it's really important to be together. So I only have a few updates today, and I want to make sure that you guys have a lot of opportunity to ask some questions, especially since this is Mitch's formerly last SRNT session. But I do have some really exciting news. But before I launch into that, I did want to share with you, you know, we, our office, the Office of Health Communication and Education, you know, these two years, we didn't do an awful lot of traveling, but we did an awful lot of listening. And I think it's really easy to see that people are hurting. And, you know, the kids that we are trying to reach are hurting, their mental health has suffered. The adults we're trying to reach are hurting, and their mental health has suffered. And so to the degree that our efforts and our opportunities to encourage people to leave tobacco behind during this incredibly hard time, if you are working in this space, understand that we understand how hard it has been. So without further ado, I'm very, very excited to share with you that we will be launching our newest public education effort this May. And it's towards an incredibly important audience, one that will help us not only advance health equity, but to overcome tremendous historical disparities in the community among American Indian and Alaska Native youth. So I realize I do need my glasses. I was hoping I wouldn't, but I am going to put my glasses on. So FDA is developing, as I said, a historic effort, and it's certainly the first federal effort, and it might be the first national effort altogether in a historic way to reach this important audience of American Indian and Alaska Native teens, ages 13 and 17, who are at risk primarily for e-cigarette use, or otherwise known as ends. For a frame of reference or context, there's roughly 400,000 Native teens in the United States today, and more than half of them are at risk for tobacco use, including ends. This audience of youth demonstrate higher tobacco susceptibility, and that's ever use as well as current use. Then there are non-AIAN peers, which I'm sure a lot of you are very well aware of. Oops, and I went back to, let's see, did I do that? I don't know how to go backwards, so I'm just going to keep going forwards.
Just the back one.
I'm sorry? Is the red? There we go, thank you. I'll have to be careful if I'm touching it. They also, this audience also has a tendency towards much earlier initiation. And so it's really important that they hear messages of prevention early and often, and a lot younger than we would normally do. And these factors have ultimately led to really disproportionate health outcomes for this community. And so we're hoping that this effort in some small way will begin to right some of those current wrongs. So those of you who are familiar with FDA understand that we do copious amounts of research, and our public education efforts certainly subscribe to that philosophy. So we've taken the time that we needed because this is an audience that is incredibly important and special, and it's critical to get it right. And so we spent a long time in primary research, primarily in message development. We did an extensive literature review, which many of those of you in this room have helped to contribute to. But we also talked to a lot of subject matter experts, especially in the public health and tobacco space. We developed concepts that we're going to be able to launch in May, but I am going to be sharing with you the highlights of some of our most recent research, including our copytesting results, which is the last phase of our research that we employ to ensure that our messages are relevant, salient, actionable, believable, and have the opportunity to not only shift knowledge, attitudes, and beliefs, but hopefully intentions and behaviors towards tobacco products. And in this case, it's vaping prevention. So I want to share with you, sorry, let's see, there we go, this video.
Next Legends is a part of FDA's commitment to address vaping use among teens.
And is specifically made for American Indian and Alaska Native youth. Next Legends is going to highlight the dangers of vaping so that our community can stay Native Strong vape-free.
Through focus groups of American Indian and Alaska Native teens and conversations with community members and public health partners throughout Indian country, Next Legends has identified key insights from our communities that are foundational to the campaign.
We learned that Native teens have admirable goals, like doing the right thing and being healthy.
For us, it's about achieving our goals and building the future to be healthy in mind, body, and spirit.
A healthy mind is the mental strength to work through our emotions and persevere in life.
Body is our physical well-being and being physically capable of doing the things that matter to us.
And spirit is the belief that we are part of something bigger than ourselves, and it's respect for our culture, community, and our environment.
Family and community plays a big role in this because we see our family and our community as people who get us, understand our goals, and know our struggles.
It's these relationships that guide us and keep us healthy, strong, and safe.
We are proud of our Native heritage and protective of who we are and where we come from.
We will not let vaping hold us back from a healthy mind, body, and spirit.
Next Legends is a campaign that meets teens where they live and on platforms they use the most. Overall, the campaign hopes to encourage youth, like me, to be Next Legends Native Strong.
Native Strong.
Native Strong.
Vape Free.
I wish we could have taken you into our focus groups, but the youth we talk to here are really amazing. And they are very incredibly aspirational and motivational. And so to the degree possible, we always try to make sure that our advertising meets them where they are and delivers a message in a compelling way, but one that will be well-received, not only for them, but also for their family and the community around them, which are so critically important. So some key qualitative themes that came through loud and clear in our second round of research, and I'm just going to have to get a little bit closer to you, Mitch, well, never mind. One is the perceived norms. And vaping was perceived to be incredibly common among their peers, so much so that they said, really, for our generation, it's the vape. And so that was really telling to us because originally, when we started doing this research, we thought we were going to be doing a cigarette prevention effort. But through the course of talking with these youth, we realized, and obviously looking at the prevalence numbers, that we realized we should be trying to tackle vaping first and foremost. Environmentally, they said that they can really get access to these products almost everywhere, both from social sources, their friends, their peers, their family members, but also they're able to buy them online. And so this is something that, you know, we don't, our office doesn't specifically focus on, but it's really important for us to understand where and how they're getting access to their products. In terms of perceived risks, perceptions of vaping have really changed in the last five years. And in the way that I think we would hope that they would. So five years ago, across the board, we found that kids didn't perceive any risks whatsoever when it came to vaping. That's not the case anymore. And so there is an acknowledgement that there is absolutely risks associated with vaping and ones that we're going to be really focusing on. So this is a report card, a dashboard that we look at when we do our final round of research. And there's really four key areas that we look at to help us understand and ensure the accuracy of our messages and our ability to actually put the spots out there. And so we look at perceived effectiveness score of the spot, and this is a mean range. And so anything over 3.0 gives us the belief that the ad will actually make a difference. We look at comprehension of the message and message clarity to ensure that the message is well-understood. We look at knowledge attitudes and beliefs and see if there's a statistical improvement from viewing the ad just one time. And we look at the emotional response to the ads because, as you know, people are emotional, and the heart wants what the heart wants. And so we have to be able to break through the clutter in a way that kind of elevates emotions. And so the first spot, which we're not going to preview today because we are holding it for the launch, is based on Native storytelling. It's a visual design that is really talking about a character or parable in Native culture called the trickster. And the role of trickster is to shape-change into either an animal or a person, and the goal is to create confusion and distraction. And so in this spot, Trickster is trying to encourage a young girl to vape. And despite her best, she is duped into it, but it has a very positive message at the end, specifically focusing in on the impact of vaping to the lungs. This ad scored incredibly high from our perspective. The main message was clearly understood in terms of moving knowledge attitudes and beliefs in a statistically significant way. Those that saw the ad only one time felt that vaping would be unenjoyable, it would produce harmful chemicals and introduce toxic metals into their lungs. And as a result of seeing this ad, they felt understood, motivated to potentially not vape, empowered but yet worried about, because a lot of the kids we're talking to were current vapers. The next ad is called "Out of Your Control." And this one is really focusing in on the fact that once you're addicted to nicotine, it can kind of take over and allow you to kind of disregard things that you know that are important, in this case, disregarding family. This message was incredibly well-received with a P-E or perceived effective score of 4.0. Kids found it to be very informative, powerful, and worth remembering. They talked about it, and that's how you know that there's stickiness associated with it. 93% clearly understood the message, and 89% said they were not all confused. Six out of seven knowledge, attitude, and belief statements moved in a statistically significant direction after just one viewing of the ad, which leads us to believe that this spot can be incredibly powerful. The most movement came from the notion of that vaping would be actually unenjoyable, it would harm their body, and it would allow them to become addicted. And emotionally, teens who saw it felt that we understood them. They felt motivated to potentially make a change, disappointed in the fact that they might have been addicted, and very sad about the outcome. So these spots, we think, have a tremendous ability to make a big difference, and we'll be launching it in May of this year, so we're very excited. And now I want to shift gears really quickly to talk about research that we conducted just as the pandemic was hitting. And so, you know, we heard certainly a lot of confusion among adults at that time. But there are some key findings that I thought would be really interesting and relevant to this audience. And, you know, if you take away one thing here, it's that smoking cessation doesn't mean what we think smoking cessation means anymore. So the key takeaways from this So the key takeaways from this research among adult smokers, and this was part of our Every Try Counts campaign, is to really understand what their current perceptions were about nicotine, and how barriers to their understandings would keep them from quitting. And some of the things that we found were really quite startling, but some of them was also very understandable. Quitting cigarettes remains incredibly hard, despite trying to do it over and over and over and failing many, many times. The definition of quitting has been completely redefined by e-cigarettes, and I'll drill down into that a little bit more deeply. There also tends to be a steady drumbeat of contradiction, which allows for these smokers to not take action. There are tremendous misperceptions around nicotine, which I think all of you know. And then, let, let me drill down deeply into quitting and the fact of how hard it is. So there are an awful lot of perceived benefits of smoking, and they are barriers to actually quitting. So participants mentioned over and over that they smoked during very stressful times and stressful situations, and they do it to alleviate their anxiety. And, you know, as we were doing this research, and the pandemic was really getting underway, and lockdowns were really getting underway, people expressed a lot more personal stress in their life, and how they needed their cigarettes, they could not leave their cigarettes behind, because it was the only thing that was helping to ground them and to stop them from being incredibly stressed out. So that's a huge barrier. Participants also derive a sense of community from smoking, and they frequently smoke and socialize with friends. And because many of them lived in households with other smokers, it was something that the thought of quitting just really wasn't even in their, in their consideration set. Smoking also offered the opportunity to decompress after a very stressful workday. So a lot of our audience were continuing to have to work outside the home during the, the pandemic and the shutdown. And so they would always talk about how, when they got home, or when they got in their car, smoking was the first thing they did, because they absolutely had to relieve the stress. So quitting has also been redefined. And what I mean by that is that it doesn't mean quitting anymore. And so cessation, we really need to think about it. If you're working on cessation and cessation efforts, you have to really think about it from their perspective, because what you might be saying might be different than how they're interpreting it. So, one, they talked a lot about the fact that they were just cutting down on the number of cigarettes, and that was quitting to them. And so, you know, we know that there's the, the thought about the reduction strategy, but in the past, I think it was thought of differently. Now it's thought of, I'm, I've quit my pack-a-day cigarettes, so I might be smoking seven, but I'm good, because I've quit. And so there's a lot of misperceptions and misunderstanding about what the benefits are of, of reduction. They're also more fluidly transferring between, or flowing between, different types of tobacco products. And it's really become very fluid, and we're also seeing this with the kids that we're talking to. This fluid transition, what we would call dual and poly-use, is much more natural for them, and they too talk about that in terms of quitting. They also talk about smoking socially, and so to them, hanging out with friends is a major trigger, but it's also one that they're not willing to give up. And so that's another thing to keep in mind. And then switching to vaping, I think that there are a lot that are talking about quitting cigarettes and, but to quit, they can quit a cigarette, but they can't quit, quit nicotine. And so I think that's just important for us to think about, potentially from a risk continuum standpoint, and, and really to kind of get inside their minds. They also have contradicting instincts, and what does that mean? So, there's a steady drumbeat of contradiction. And so smokers across the focus groups, we heard this, they yearn for encouragement in their quit journey, but they also hide their quit attempts from all their friends and family, because they're afraid to let them know that they might fail again. They crave social support to help quit, but yet they aren't willing to give up their social network, because their social network are also smokers. And so they don't really have a way or a mechanism to get that social support. They see failed quit attempts as part of their identity, and it's become kind of a comforting ritual, that they know that it's okay that they failed in the past. Hopefully it'll help them to kind of think about what their next, what their next quit attempt will be. They want to quit, but they acknowledge that only a major life-stage event would motivate them to quit. And they did acknowledge that there is a lot of value in a, in a plan or a quit date, but basically they say, I'll just do it when I'm ready, and when I'm ready, I'll just stop. And so there's not a lot of planning in advance. There is also a tremendous misunderstanding about what nicotine is and isn't. Among almost all the focus groups, they were able to describe nicotine as the addictive chemical, but they were split on whether or not it was naturally occurring, or it was actually added to the cigarettes. And I think this meant a lot to them, depending on what their mindset was, especially towards tobacco and tobacco industry. Most participants acknowledged that it was a key factor in why they kept smoking, but they also liked that about smoking, because they know it will immediately give them a dopamine response, which will reward them and alleviate their stress. And then, as a lot of you know, and I remember you guys talking about the last SRNT, they really incorrectly believe that nicotine causes all the negative health effects, including cancer. And finally, harm and addiction are inexplicably intertwined. And that stems from, you know, I think, overall misunderstandings. So frequency of use, they perceived that the more you used a product, the more harmful it was, and the more addictive it was. And so it was kind of, the frequency was wrapped around how harmful it was, which was very interesting insight to us. Also, quality and the processing. So the more high-quality a product was seen to be, the, and the more in its natural form, and they talked a lot about premium cigars, or natural, or American Spirit, those were thought to be less harmful, simply by the fact that they were perceived as high-quality products. So that's an interesting insight. From a cost perspective, the most expensive products were perceived as the least harmful and the least addictive, which was also very interesting. The whole idea of quality and cost, kind of elevating their beliefs that these are safer products. And then how the product was consumed was also, also a lot of confusion, especially the fact that there was not a lot of understanding that it's combustion and the burning of tobacco that, that causes a lot of the toxic chemicals. That was an idea that was really lost on them. So to sum it up, in terms of their overall thoughts on this spectrum of harm, first and foremost, cigarettes were consistently placed among the most harmful products. But as I just mentioned, it was not at all understood that it was the combustion of these cigarettes that make them so harmful. So I think this is a key potential area for future public education efforts, to really make sure smokers understand the dangers specifically related to combustion of tobacco. NRT was perceived as one of the least harmful, yet addictive, products, but there remains tremendous hesitancy and barriers to using them. And I think that, you know, we all need to, we all need to think about that in terms of, you know, shifting smokers down the continuum, especially if they remain really hesitant about, around FDA-approved products. And then finally, perceptions of e-cigarettes harmed, varied widely, and I think that was also leading to a lot of barriers to thinking about leaving cigarettes behind. And so finally, it wasn't understood that vaping is a less harmful way to get nicotine, because the product isn't burned. So I think these are all areas of opportunity, potentially from a messaging standpoint. So in summary, the Shifting Tobacco Land campaign has impacted smoking perceptions and quitting behaviors, and two years of a global pandemic has certainly shifted people's mindsets, especially as it pertains to mental health. Research findings are super complicated, they're all interrelated, and they underscored the challenge if you are trying to message specifically and exclusively on cessation, and what cessation used to mean to a public health audience like this. Future efforts could continue cessation education, and also really try to address nicotine misperceptions and gaps, which is huge. And then, you know, both Mitch and Ben talked about a regulated marketplace, and, you know, our goals and our mission is always to prevent youth initiation, to encourage adult cessation of all tobacco products, and to ensure that products that remain on the market are less harmful. And so in a fully regulated marketplace, there's the opportunity for more consistent messaging about products that can be found to be appropriate for the protection of public health, once Office of Science has finally made those decisions. And FDA remains committed to messaging to smokers in a way that will really help them leave the most dangerous products behind. So thank you very much. I want to open it up for questions, so please feel free to head towards.
Thank you all very much. This is, I'm Robin Mermelstein from the University of Illinois at Chicago. As always, you guys do a fabulous presentation, and I really want to thank Mitch, to start with, for your exceptional leadership in correcting. I don't think, I don't think any of us could have imagined somebody who would be more genuine and respected in your position, so thank you.
Thank you, Rob.
Now I have a broader question, which is, we talk about what's good for the public health, and infused through all the talks was this concept of mental health, and which makes me think, when we talk about the balance of public health and protection, all of our metrics are physical. And how do we now think about the balance? And I'm not necessarily saying that people are smoking after Kathy's presentation, which has been, you know, true, and, and everyone smokes for supposedly the benefits, stress, anxiety. And then what we know from Ben and as well Kathy, our, our current smokers tend to be more psychologically distressed. So thinking about what's of benefit for them, I'm not at all arguing, but I'm just saying some of those messages need to say that sometimes quitting enhances mental health. But we're ignoring an important part of that mental, of the public health, that maybe we need to have better metrics or incorporate to avoid the misperception that among psychologically distressed people, quitting is bad. So just something to consider.
Anything you want to say from a scientific perspective?
I'll just say thanks for, for that comment. I think it's really spot-on, and, you know, it's, it's something that you sort of see throughout the, you know, any kind of data that you look at in terms of where, you know, who, who's continuing to use the most harmful products, and it's a common thread through that. So I appreciate you bringing, bringing that up.
And Robin, thank you for what you, you said personally. You make a profound point that, that in some respects goes beyond what FDA and CTP can do about underlying systemic issues. We, we know, from looking at the statistics, who the remaining smoker is. We know that, you know, smoker, cigarettes especially are disproportionately used by those with substance abuse and mental health comorbidities. Any help that the research community can be to helping us as regulators keep that top of mind, and inform the, the regulatory policy and application review decisions that we need to make, in addition to supporting ongoing research and public education efforts, is really important. I've said several times already this afternoon, the remaining smoker. And those population-level numbers for prevalence and consumption mask a lot of bad things that are going on at a sub-population level. Historically low adult and youth smoking rates, but when we looked at, when we look at who the remaining smoker is, there are, there are societal and systemic issues that also need to be tackled. We are prepared to be part of that solution, but I think some of these underlying issues go way beyond what we as regulators can do. I think that with the kind of profound societal awareness just in the last few years on issues really related to health disparities and health equity, the, the role thematically that is playing in this year's SRNT is the start of, of a new approach, and a, and a new way of, of looking horizontally, broadly, at, at, at public health issues that, that sort of transcend, well, there's an alcohol problem, or there's an illicit drug problem, or there's a tobacco problem. So thank you for your comments.
Thank you very much for the excellent presentations. My question is about synthetic nicotine. By the way, I'm Sairam Jaba, I'm from Duke University, and I'm part of ELT course. My question is about synthetic nicotine. With synthetic nicotine being regulated, do you expect that market is going to shift back to tobacco-derived nicotine because of the cost involved with synthetic nicotine? And more broadly, for the research community, like what would be the stakes for people who want to invest in investigating synthetic nicotine for various things? So will there be more support for that kind of research, or because the market might shift back to tobacco-derived nicotine, that there may not be much interest from FDA to study synthetic nicotine?
Anything you want to say about it from a research standpoint, synthetic nicotine from a research standpoint, and I'll talk about the policy issue.
Sure. Yeah, thanks for the, the question. I mean, from a research perspective, you know, I mean, we're, we're always looking to, to fund research that's the most directly, you know, impactful to informing our regulatory decisions. So I think, you know, the fact that it looks like we're getting authority over synthetic nicotine, I mean, yes, that's part of, you know, what we would consider priorities for, for research. So I would just say, keep an eye out for the, the space where we're, you know, laying out the, the different funding opportunities.
And what I would say from a, sort of like a policy perspective, and I, and I think what you were asking sort of from a marketplace perspective, is we have no idea what the industry is going to do. The, the point of what Congress did with that legislation, which we, we think the President signed within the last hour, is now it doesn't matter what the source of nicotine is. You know, in the absence of, of a therapeutic claim, which would take it under the agency's drug authorities, we, we now can use the, the tobacco authorities and apply the, the full force of what's in the statute, and in our implementing regulations, so that we can effectively regulate the, the marketplace for tobacco products. I think it's going to be interesting to see how the industry responds, but I have, I have no idea how they're going to respond, either on a cost basis or for, for some other reason, in picking and choosing between tobacco-derived and non-tobacco-derived nicotine.
Thank you.
Hello, this is Nancy Rigotti from Boston, and I also want to honor you, Mitch, for your service over the last almost decade, and very happy that you're with us again today. I wanted to address some questions to Kathy about the messaging campaigns. There were really two points. One of them was that, because we know that, as you pointed out, that a lot of smokers don't understand that it's, the nicotine is not what kills them, is there a potential that some of the messaging, some of the messaging efforts could go into, to helping to create the correct norms, the correct understandings, to, to, to correct those misunderstandings about mental health, and also about the other things? Then the, the second thing was, with your Native American efforts, what I was surprised to see was that it was entirely focusing on vaping, and not at all on smoking as well. And I wondered if you had thought about whether that almost could give the message that it's okay to use tobacco, especially in a culture where tobacco has historically been part of the, the culture.
Yeah.
I'm sure you thought about this, so I'd love to hear what you, what you have to say.
That's a great question, and, and may I start there, and then I'll go back to the first question? So, so one of the things we know is that this audience of teens also are very effectively reached with our Real Cost Campaign, and so the Real Cost effort is, is really driving home about the dangers of smoking as well. And when we talked to the Native American youth, they were very, very well-aware of the real cost, the real cost messaging, and they were able to identify. And so we felt like we had that piece covered from the, the Real Cost, which was really more of like the Master Umbrella Campaign. But when we did talk to the, to the Native teens, they said that their issue for them was really all about vaping. And that's where, you know, we really should make a, a mark on vaping. So the hope is with the Real Cost and Next Legends in the market together, working together, that we'll have a combined opportunity, and all boats will rise, on, on both of those tobacco products. So I hope that helps. Your first question, I think, is a more difficult one to answer, and that's really about utilizing communications to overcome misperceptions without inadvertently, especially from a youth audience. You know, some of the misperceptions about nicotine is a protective factor for them when it comes to vaping and smoking. And so we always have to think about the fact that we're messaging to both adults in adult-appropriate ways, and we're messaging to youth in youth-appropriate ways. And we have to try to find a way to bring a balance, so that we always are presenting correct science, but we're not, like, there's not unintended consequences. And so I've heard you speak very eloquently before about the, the burden of, of adults' misunderstanding nicotine, and, and, you know, how it leads them to continue to smoke. And so we're really well-aware of those issues, and, and trying to create a delicate balance between youth prevention and adult cessation, while still being true to the science. So I don't know if I answered your question.
So, I don't know if I answered your question, but I'm happy to talk with you afterwards. All right. Dr. Ashley, you've been waiting so patiently, and I think we're getting close to...
David, before you start, let me ask the SRNT folks, we're in, oh, I think we're in overtime. Is it okay to take, let's say, two more questions, and keep on going, and then we can talk informally after that? Okay. Great. David?
One more question, anyway.
I think Scott would disagree with that.
David Ashley, Georgia State University. Mitch, five years ago, you and Commissioner Gottlieb made an incredible announcement about reducing the levels of nicotine in tobacco content. Last couple of these presentations, I've not really heard that mentioned before, and I just really wanted to know, has that completely fallen off the list of priorities, or is it still being considered within the center?
The short answer is, it is still being considered within the administration, and that this goes to sort of the deliberative process. And the only thing that I can say in a public setting is that we remain in discussion with the Biden Administration about that policy.
If I can make mine as quick, Scott Lishow, Arizona State University. So, I hadn't thought about this till this meeting, you know, with the reality that nicotine is going to be, synthetic nicotine is going to be regulated. So, have you thought about what that means in terms of messaging? It's no longer, I mean, Sotera, you know, the Sotera decision, you know, allowed nicotine to be regulated, as I understand it, because it came from tobacco. Now, Congress is making synthetic nicotine regulated, even though it's not coming from tobacco. So, does the messaging need to change about the, you know, what's being regulated? Do we need to be saying more about tobacco and nicotine products because, again, the synthetic isn't derived from tobacco? So, how do you think about framing this going forward? It's a hard question to answer now, but it is something I've been thinking about.
Yeah, I can start, and if Kathy has anything to add, she should. Look, it was literally, we think, signed into law by the President within the last hour, so give us some time. The first thing that we have to do in the messaging world is to adequately and properly message what this legislation means for regulatory, legal, and policy purposes. And that's the internal exercise we're going through right now. But Scott's question, you know, is more far-reaching and longer-term, and I think it's an interesting question that we're not prepared to answer now. Let us address the immediate and short-term things that must be addressed through messaging, and then we can get to some of the longer-term implications now that FDA has the authority to regulate nicotine from any source as a tobacco product. I don't know if Kathy wants to add anything.
The only thing I would say is, this is something we're really aware of and have been tracking with our youth prevention work, and we do know that kids don't make a distinction at all. It's nicotine is nicotine is nicotine is nicotine to them, and we've just been hitting at home that it's an addictive quality. And so, to them, they don't need to know that puff bar is synthetic. It's like they just know that it's a nicotine delivery device. So, I don't think it matters in terms of kids, but I do think with an adult education, it matters greatly.
Last question.
Yeah, it's not a question. I think it would be an enormous mistake if we finished today without asking everyone to stand up and thank you for eight years of unbelievably dedicated work.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Matt. And actually, I did want to take the exiting Center Director's prerogative to have the last word, even though we are in overtime. But I'm enormously appreciative of that and everything that you all have said. This is my last SRNT as Center Director, but I'm not going, I'm retiring, but I'm not going anywhere. And I confirmed with Bruce that there is a reduced membership fee for people who are truly retired. He said, though, that there isn't necessarily a retirement, reduced retirement fee for registration for future conferences. That might be something that SRNT would want to look into now that I'm retiring. But, the relationship that FDA has with this organization is special, and is going to continue, you know, long after I am put out to pasture. The work that we do programmatically, the work that you all do to inform our thinking and to sort of drive and guide the day-to-day work of the center is going to continue. What we do, which can sometimes be incredibly hard, at the end of the day, is a labor of love. We're all in this, regardless of what your day jobs are. We are all in this because there's something about working on reducing tobacco use that, in its own way, has addictive properties, that have kept me doing this for 28 years, and there are people here that have been doing it a lot longer than I have. So, I look forward, after an opportunity to completely disengage, to re-engage in a private capacity, and maybe have some freedom to say some things that I haven't been able to say for the last nine years, and continue to participate in the very important dialogue that has been underway and will continue. I just want to say publicly, words of thanks for my colleagues at the Center for Tobacco Product. And you see two of the finest representations of what and who CTP is in Ben and Kathy. But whatever, whatever you think I have accomplished over the last nine years would not have been possible, sometimes in the face of really, really tough odds and challenges. Without the people of the center and what is a never-say-die attitude, we have been Charlie Brown and the football, and we have been Lucid more times than we can count. And we just pick ourselves up, and we try again, and hope that the football won't be swiped from us the next time, but sometimes it is. But that goes to the never-say-die attitude of the people of the Center for Tobacco Products. You can agree with a decision that we've made, you can disagree with a decision that we've made, you can sue us and see us in court if you really disagree with a decision that we've made. At the end of the day, we follow the science to the best of our abilities, integrate the science with what the law says, and what we think the evidence will support to try to do the best possible job that we can. It has been just an honor to be given the opportunity to return from my second stint at FDA a little over nine years ago, and a privilege to work with these people and the other people of the center, and to have the opportunity each year to interact with all of you at this wonderful conference that's put on by this incredibly important organization. So, thank you all very, very much.